We're good.
Good morning. We'll go ahead and call this Churchill County Budget Hearing Meeting to order. This time, if everyone could join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, I forgot. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. At this time, is there any public comment? Noting no public comment, can I get a verification of the posting of the agenda, please?
Good morning. Pam Moore for the record. Sorry, turned it off. Pam Moore for the record. The agenda was posted on February 12th between the hours of 1:00 and 5:00 at the locations listed on the agenda in accordance with statutes.
Thank you, Pam. Can I get an approval of the agenda as submitted?
Mr. Chair, I move for approval for the agenda as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Move on to budget hearings. A, Board of County Commissioners will conduct budget hearings as follows, and I'll turn it over to Sherri, our comptroller, for opening remarks.
I have a slideshow, short one. As you know, it's budget season, and there's a lot of things to think about: inflation, your priorities at board, political influences. We're right in the middle of a legislative session, public interest, local regulations, various things that should be in the back of your mind as we go through this budget, please. And some factors that we should consider when we're making budgetary decisions, like what our goal is as a county, what outcomes would we like to see, what are the pros and cons, and long-range implications, what are we giving up if we spend it now, what are we giving up later, and what we've learned from the past that has influenced our budgetary decisions. Ideally, what we would like is a balanced budget. That would mean that the current operating revenues would be sufficient to support the current operating expenses, and that debt or bond financing would not pay for current expenditures. I passed out two sheets. One sheet is called the fund balance. This is a summary of all the expenses that are in the budgets that are going to be presented to you in the next two days. And then the next sheet is the revenue. And it's not balanced, but there's things to consider about whether we're going to spend our opening fund balance, funds that we've carried over from the previous year. So that's something to look at while we're doing this. And historically, these are the fund balances. The yellow is all our governmental funds. The blue is the general fund. You can see, just in graph style there, and the road fund there in orange. And then here's our primary revenue sources. We have the property tax, the CTX, which is a sales tax, gas taxes. And you can see that our property taxes have been inching up. However, if you look at the assessed value for the current, for the 2025 compared to 2024, it's pretty flat. So I don't perceive that we're going to get much more than the 3% or 4% from the property taxes. I hope I'm wrong, but that's what it looks like just from the assessed values. So those are main revenues. And sales tax, after you've been hearing, we're not getting good numbers from the state right now because of their new software. Hopefully, that will rectify itself before March. That's what they promise. And then this is historical expenditures by function. We have the general government, and judicial, public safety. You can see the various expenditures there. And I can give you, if you want to look at these closer or get actual numbers, I'd be happy to provide them. But this is just the overview. And so we have a, the county adopted a fund balance policy in 2011. We want to target minimum fund balances, and so we would like to do $4.4 million should be about the balance that should be in the general fund at the end of the fiscal year, so that we have funds that roll into the next fiscal year. And then we want to target our special revenue capital projects funds and proprietary funds. We want to have about 25% of operating expenditures. And for capital expenditures, for the project, the capital funds, we want to have about one to three years' worth of depreciation. And then our debt management fund, we want to have one year's worth of principal and interest, which is about $1.3 million that our debt is costing us per year. And as always, there's employees, and this is our wage data from '15 to '26, what we've had to pay, and what kind of general adjustments or COLAs that we've given. We've always called it general adjustment because we haven't attached it directly to the COLA, so that's why it has that title. And so what we did for this year's budget is, because PERS went up so much, employees have to match half of the increase. So salaries for people that aren't elected, or pretty much the non-elected people, were increased by the 1.625%, but then that was taken away so that they could pay their portion of PERS, because that's how PERS requires us to calculate that. We would have to take that away either way. So we wanted to try to maintain them, at least at their current salaries. And what we're going to give you later in the budget is the cost of, if you wanted to go above that, to give a 1%, a 2%, or a 3% COLA. We have those numbers for you. We'll pass those out at the end of the meeting, and you can have something to think about between now and the end of the budget hearings tomorrow. And you can see, like, the PERS rate there. Went from 33.5% to 36.75%, and that's just for general employees. Police and Fire went a lot higher. I'm not on this slide, though. So basically, our challenges are always our property taxes, because they go up, but they go up slowly. And then there's also abatements. So a lot of these companies that come in go and try to get abatements through the state, and so we don't get the full property value for a set amount of time. And then we have the federal PELC. That's flat. CCCOM was pulling back their transfer of funds to us when they were doing their build-outs, and we're hoping that we're going to get those back. We'll discuss that later. And, you know, we want to, hopefully, the sales tax will be going up as we have more commerce coming into the county and more projects that'll bring income. And this is just the sheet that I just passed you out is the expenses by fund that have been budgeted. You can see the, I can't read it. You'll see the 2023, 2024 budget, and then what the 23, 24 actual was, and then our total budget for the current year, and the activity that we've had so far this year, and then what the departments are requesting in the next column, and the total at the bottom. And that's all I have. And we can kick off, as they say.
Okay. Thank you, Sherri. Before we get started, any questions for Sherri before we get into this? Okay. We'll move on to our first one, District Court. Judge Tom Stockard, come on up.
Good morning.
Is that, yeah, okay. I feel like my grandpa. It's an exciting time at the District Court. We're busy, but we're, we've fully implemented our new case management system, converted our data, have addressed some security concerns that the Supreme Court had by taking our data up into the Amazon Web Services cloud service that has some enhanced protections against hacking. And we've done that while we, we maintained the busiest caseload about even with Clark County on a per judge basis in the state of Nevada. About 1,700 cases a year we process. We do that essentially with very little, Clark County has a number of county-employed judicial officers. They either call them magistrates or masters. They're kind of transitioning from master to magistrate in the naming of it, but we're doing good. We don't, we're not asking for much in our current budget. Our law library, I guess our budget is separated into really four distinct budgets. Our court improvement budget, which is just funded by administrative assessments that are with the filing or appearances in cases, we're not asking for anything there. In the law library, we are asking to increase it by $1,500. That would be a return to the previous budget amount. We're in the middle of a three-year contract with Lexis, which is our legal research service. It just goes up every year. We tried to tell them that we needed to cut our budget 15%. They don't listen. They said, "You signed a contract, and you're a judge. You should know." And so that's where that comes from. Court security, we're asking to, once again, just to kind of return to not where we were, but where we need to be. We're asking to increase by $2,100. We have existing contracts for our X-ray machine, our metal detector, and our security camera licenses. And then we have a number of things in the District Court where we were just devastated in the last budget cycle. And I realize everyone thinks they were devastated. Ours was unique because we have so many people that are essentially employees that, for whatever reason, are classified in services and supplies. And so, and I'm not, I'm not harping on the DA's budget, because I, it's just one I'm familiar with. They have a $3 million budget, and their budget cut was $15,000. We have an $896,000 budget, and ours was $45,000, 5% of our total budget. We had to make a lot of adjustments. We open later. We close at lunch. And we close a little bit earlier than where we used to. Some of that has not been bad. The lunch hour, we tracked, and we just haven't affected the public as much as I thought. The early, the later open, I think, is a negative, because so many of the clientele, whether it's in family law, or particularly in the criminal arena, as much as their lawyers try to meet with them ahead of time, they don't generally meet with them until the day of court. And so when our doors don't open until, is it 8:30 now?
8:30.
8:30 now. We used to open earlier. People could come and meet with their counsel. But we're getting by. I'm happy to answer any questions on what we've, we've asked to do. But the big budget items that really affected us disproportionately was our security, which is, normally would be a sheriff's deputy. We don't, we're not involved in this contract. I actually don't know who it is. It's the same contractor that the Justice Court and the Sheriff's Office uses, but for us, it's characterized as a services and supply. It's about, it's a substantial discount than what we would need if we used a sheriff's deputy, just when you think about the PERS benefit that we would pay a PERS deputy. But, and so that, that affected us last year. We're asking to increase that. We're looking to reclassify our trainee court clerk who's been working or will have worked in this budget cycle for two years, and just a number of other things that we, we kind of lucked out in these cuts last year, because we haven't had any significant jury trials. My own experience over 30 years is, that's not going to continue. It might, but it might not. And so I don't know that our asks are big. We've tried to delineate what they are, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Judge Stockard. Any questions or comments? Okay. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. We'll move on to court services. Brenda
Okay. Brenda Ingram, Director of Court Services Department. My budget request is pretty flat, as you can see. I know I spoke with you when you were doing your tours of my department about reclassifying a person in my department, but I was urged not to for the greater good. So I have no supplemental requests, and my services and supplies reduced by 2,000 over last year because of the computer line item getting deleted. So it's exactly the same as what Sherri gave me.
It's easy and simple. Any questions or comments for Brenda? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to emergency management. Richard Ingram.
Ingram Day. We'll get him out of the way. Good morning, everyone. For the record, Richard Ingram, Churchill County Emergency Manager. As instructed, my budget has been submitted, as you can see on the documents in front of you, with, I believe, the only increase being a slight personnel cost, as everyone else's is. During the commissioners' tours, by the way, before I move any further, this is the first time I've seen the two new commissioners welcome aboard. Congratulations. I spoke with you two, along with then Commissioner Heath at the commissioners' tours. Miles, I don't think you were able to make it at the time, but I provided an overview of the situation and status of emergency management as, from my perspective, and provided, I think, a little bit of insight into how emergency management budget works, particularly as it relates to primarily grant-funded slash grant-reimbursed. And so it may be a bit peculiar compared to others, but maybe not. Sometimes the line items go into deficit, but they are seen apparently on a revenue side, hopefully on the revenue side, after I've made reimbursements, and those entities, CIRK and DEM, have made the reimbursement. So it's kind of a fluid thing that'll sometimes show minuses, but I think on the, in the end run, the revenues come close to funding a good portion of the budget. So I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Richard. Any questions or comments from border staff? Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Motoring right along. Move to Justice Court. Justice of the Peace, Ben Trotter.
Good morning, Board and Chairman. Our budget request is pretty simple. Also, we have, I think the primary thing I have put in is that we installed Zoom in the upstairs courtroom. I think I'm picking up okay. And it's done well. We did use a lot of the JAVs equipment that we already had, which is no longer serviced. So when it dies, it dies. So I've requested the idea of putting in for a grant this July through the AOC, Administrative Office of Courts, for $50,000. That's the maximum that'll do through the grant that I have done before. And there is a 30% match, so that would be a $15,000 match from the county. This would be to complete the Zoom upstairs, put Zoom in downstairs, so we have two fully functional courts. And hopefully, if there's some left, we do have some, a substantial list of aging computers in the, in the office there. I'd love to be able to pass some of that on to the IT department to hopefully cover some of those computers. I was, I did not put those in the budget, as I was advised. They're not in my budget this year, so they're in the IT budget. So otherwise, I don't, I don't know how old your document is. I did have Amanda, one of my clerks, actually leave after commuting from Gardinerville for a couple months. And so I had put her in for being reclassified to clerk. Don't need to do that now, so that's off. So it's really just the grant and the match required of that. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments from border staff?
Mr. Chairman.
I just want to clarify that we did not put that, it's not included in the budget of the increase. The only thing that was put in the budget was the increased cost for the 10-hour day schedules, which you can see on the blue sheet under the revenue sum in your spot. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri. Jim?
Yeah, a couple of, a couple of questions. On the Zoom stuff, is that some, is that technology that could then be moved over to what is now District Court, recognizing that maybe in three years, we have a new courthouse, and District Court moves over, and you guys move over?
Should be fully portable.
Okay. So that makes perfect. That'll be easy. And then just, sorry, I know you guys have covered this a million times, but I get lost in it. Do you guys, does District Court and Justice Court use different systems? Because I know at one point, Justice, District Court was looking at, when you moved over, it would be all new in the new District Court. So there would be the old stuff, which is new.
You're talking the recording system?
Yeah, maybe.
I know that--
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind--
District Court uses Zoom. We use Zoom. We just became fully Zoom. We've been using it since COVID. Well, almost fully Zoom, because of budget requirements. I attempted not to bring in all their equipment upfront, so.
You hit that, yeah, hit the blinking one. Yep.
Tom Stockard, District Court Judge, for the record. Currently at the District Court, our primary, or our court of record is JAVs, which is Digital Audio-Visual Systems. We do use Zoom as a backup. There are a number of courts in Nevada that are switching to Zoom. JAVs, it has some pluses, but ongoing maintenance costs are, they're sticky. And so I'm watching anxiously as the Justice Court implements Zoom, the Winnemucca District Court is using it. What I would anticipate when we move would probably to leave the systems that were there and apply for those same grants through the AOC to get the $50,000 for the courtrooms in the District Court.
And at that point, you'll have a better feeling. So maybe it's Zoom, maybe it's, okay, that makes sense. One other thing, while I've got you here. I know we've had some struggles on the court hours of operation thing, and I know that that's inclusive of the budget as part of the adjustment that we would make in the budget there. I would ask the commissioners, if they're, they're willing to, to, you know, approve that in the draft budget that we submit to the state, as it, as it is currently, because I know you guys have to move on. But in the in-between time, if you would direct or allow me to work with the District Court Judge and the Justice Court Judge, and I've, I've been poking around, looking at different solutions that we might be able to have that would fit everybody's needs. And one of those I've seen is in Douglas and Carson, I know is a couple, and there may be a few more that do it, that have taken their court clerks and basically created a Department of Court Clerks, and then they can be scheduled across the two courts of operation. Additionally, we have potentially a second District Court Judge that could be approved in this legislative session, which aligns with the two district courts that we would have in the construction build that we have moving forward. So then, basically, when that District Court Judge came in, there would be a couple of three, four positions that would come in on that, but then they would just be added to that department, and that would give us a pool of clerks that could then have the flexibility of different schedules. When folks are sick or whatever, you would have somebody that's there that can, can fill in, and basically looking at a cross train. Obviously, that's a large conversation I need to have with the judges that, that I have not had. But if in the interim between submitting the draft budget, which is going to be roughly about four weeks, right? Six, something like that?
April 15th. No, I don't know. I don't have budget.
It's, it's weeks. In whatever that weeks' time period is, I could commit to trying to put together what that would look like. Could that provide us with greater efficiency? Could that provide us with greater public hours? Could that, which I know is a huge issue for Judge Trotter, to come up with a working solution that then also addresses our security needs and covers court services when they're in the building, meeting with their folks, so that we have a better package overall. And in that conversation, they may take me out behind the building and whapple out of me, and that, that's fine, too. But at least we can have the conversation and come back, and then this will be submitted as the, as a holding spot to then see if we want to make an adjustment to that in the final budget, if the commissioners would entertain that option.
I think that's a good idea, Jim, personally, if we could look into that and see how we can address some of those issues. I don't know what the other two think, but--
Just off the cuff, the first issue would be, the District Court has a different operating schedule than Justice Court. So the clerks, you know, one week they might get overtime, they might not. I don't know how that, you know, that's just a thought at the moment.
That is exactly the point of trying to see what we could put together to address those issues. Exactly. That, that would be the whole point of it.
I mean, we've talked about it.
Judge Trotter and I have had that conversation on a few times, and it's, it's always been either not the right moment for the Justice Court, or not the right moment for the District Court. Maybe now's the moment, especially Jim talked about AB 66, which is currently in the legislature, which I think is a unique opportunity for our county, because that's a bill to add a second District Court Judge to our district. It would be, it would be good, in a lot of ways, and maybe the most significant from the county perspective, is it's a cost that's borne by the state. In a world where they push down constantly on counties, it's nice, because we're probably at the point that if we don't get that, we'd probably need a full-time master, and I'd rather not do that, or magistrate, and I'm trying to train myself to use that word. And, and so, I, I mean, I'm open to, to looking at it. And by the way, I don't have the mask to do any whooping anymore.
We've matched each other in masks, so we should be just like before, all good.
Okay. Well, I think Jim will coordinate with you guys then, and kind of see if that's a plausible thing or not, so.
Sure.
Okay. Any other questions from border staff? Okay. Thank you, guys. We will jump to alternate public defender, unless you have Jacob on the phone, Pam.
He's on, online, on the go-to meeting, so he's ready to go.
Okay. We'll start with alternate, and we'll jump over to Jacob.
Good morning. Well, I think that depends how you want. I mean, we can go together. We're pretty much aligned, so you can do whatever you want to do.
You can just go, and then we'll see if Jacob wants to add anything. We'll cover it that way.
So my name's Wright, Department Head for the Alternate Public Defender's Office. I think you've received my budget packet. I don't have any extraordinary asks this year, just asking to keep it level. I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments for alternate public defender? Jacob, can you hear me? If so, you can go ahead and start. Can you hear us in here?
Mr. Summer here.
Okay, my apologies. I'm trying to work this out. I've been listening to the hearings, and so I'm familiar with how fast it's going, but to the commissioners, I would say, our budget summary really says it all. We don't, we aren't really asking for anything additional. There's no capital outlay or request for reclassification. The only budget ask we're seeking is just a slight increase in a couple of areas. Those are outlined, but it totals about $4,000 more than last year's budget, and that reflects some additional information we've received now as we've got our new building and have the actual numbers for utilities and cost of operation in that building and things like that. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but essentially flat from last year, and we just want to make sure we keep going with, with the good progress we're making with staff and meeting the requirements of the Department of Indigent Defense, trying to keep them happy, at the same time making sure that we don't, don't do anything we shouldn't be. So let me know if you have questions.
Any questions or comments for alternate public defender or public defender?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I do have a question. Just more for clarification. Wright and Jacob, on your personnel request, Wright, you have a, virtually it's flat. There's nothing in here for the public defender. But when I look at the budget worksheet that was submitted as part of the packet under other salaries and wages, regular full-time, it looks like there's $134, less than $134,000 increase from last year to this year, which in turn also has an impact on the retirement. So I just wanted to see if you could provide a little clarification as to what that increase
So as to that particular information, I think that probably reflects the reality that we actually did hire one attorney and are currently advertising at the Step Two Public Defender. So I think the prior budget last year was based on all public defender ones. And so that particular increase just reflects the fact that we found that the, that we were not getting quality applicants. And so we, I think, if, I'm pretty sure that that accounts for those different numbers in terms of salary, retirement, and things like that.
So this is Jim Barbie, for the record. So that would be across the, like, four attorney positions that you would have additionally. I know you got one of them now.
Well, I would say, it's possible, but I think what I had talked to Chris about recently, and Jim, I don't know if we've talked about it, but we've been advertising at the public defender two level, and what we're really trying to do now is recruit some of those entry-level positions so that we can keep them at public defender one. And so I think it's possible that we would find, hey, we're not getting any more applicants at all for public defender one. And so if, we may decide that public defender two slot is the way that we go. But we really would like to, you know, currently fill what we've got. We've got one more applicant that has applied under public defender two, and we'll see how that goes. But we really are trying to get people with new, you know, new graduates, low experience, so that we can train them up. And that usually should result in a, you know, a starting salary at the public defender one. Now, I realize that's kind of talking out of both sides because we really didn't get applicants before under public defender one, but we're going to try to give it another shot to make sure that we have checked all the boxes.
And Mr. Chairman, if I can just have a couple of seconds for clarity, reminder to you, and then clarity for our new commissioners, is that as of October of '24, DIDs made a requirement that these positions be advertised and in existence relative to the alternate public defender and the public defenders office, which was an increase, I believe, of five-ish lawyers total and then additional, yeah, support staff, but they have a term. I'm not using it right, sorry. But additional positions, roughly seven additional positions. So those were put in the budget for FY '25 in that time period. Thus far, we've only been able to fill one support position and one attorney position. So although that shows that we're expending these funds and we have to include those in our budget at the end of the year, that's going to show a fair amount of savings, where normally we probably would have done them one-off. Like, for example, with positions that could be coming in sniplama, those aren't in the budget because we don't want to have to fight to get revenue to offset that. We're having to fight to get revenue to offset these, just in terms of how the budget plays, so you have a better idea. So we're going to have roughly savings from, which is not counted in our gapping list, but as we get close to the end of FY '25, we're going to have some significant amount of savings because we're going to have, you know, five or however many positions were not filled by the time we get to the end of the year. The same would be true as we move into this next budget. These positions will stay in this budget, but if we don't have qualified folks, something doesn't change drastically, and that could be any number of things. I don't know what those are. The reality is that we're having to find revenue to match against these as you look at your final decision tomorrow, just to draw that out. Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Jim, for that reminder. Any other questions from border staff? Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Move on to review and discussion of presented budgets. I don't know who wants to start. It was a pretty easy day. A lot of flats in there. Does anyone have anything they want to add?
Just on the public defender salaries, there was also an additional secretary that was put in during the fiscal year last year. So that's, it would not be a new position here. However, it was a position that was put in because I have three instead of two to address Chris's question.
Okay, thank you, Sherry. Anything else someone wants to add?
Just to add to this, because it is complicated, right? So the alternate is set up to deal with cases where you have conflicts by the primary public defender. So obviously, the focus is staffing up the public defenders office because the more staff that you have in the public defenders office, the less odds you have for a need of an alternate. So as we got to, because the alternate had a second attorney as well, budgeted, I think. So that would be probably the last attorney that we would fill a position into, so that it kind of gives you an idea of how this thing cascades out, if we ever get enough attorneys in the rules. We're not unique in this. They're also struggling to find qualified attorney candidates in both Washoe and Clark County, so we're also competing against those. So we are meeting the letter of the law and the spirit of the requirement as put forward by the courts and the state through the DIDs program. But there are certain realities in terms of viable candidates that exist over the next couple of years. And I think it's important for you to mind that as we get into our final budget conversations tomorrow. And Joe just gave me the neutral look, so I didn't screw it up.
Sounds good. I'll just add, this requirement for additional DIDs attorneys, public defense attorneys, was a mandate placed across every single rural county in the state of Nevada. And so essentially, every rural county either had to double or triple the number of defense attorneys they had, and so it's not entirely unexpected that we're having difficulty filling them because every rural county is trying to compete for the same 10 people who do this work.
And when the report came out, I counted it was upwards of 50 attorneys that they were having to shove into the rural. So that gives you an idea of what heavy lift this is.
Anything, have anyone, anything, have anyone else? Anyone have anything else they want to add on this?
Just concerning those public defender, as time goes by, do you think that they will see that this is not achievable and they will bring back the requirements? Or you think those, we hope. So that's, okay.
Kind of, yeah, like Jim said, that's the hope, but we'll see. Okay, any other comments? Okay, we'll move on to any public comment. We stand adjourned. Thank you, guys.